Your mic, is your mic on?
Yes, it is now. I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the Clarkville's Community College Board Work Session. Today is Wednesday, September the seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Are you okay? I want to turn this over to Katie Riggs, Board Recorder, to get us started.
Yes, just a moment, please.
Share a screen.
That's all right. You want me to pass you some?
No, no, all that stays there. My notes.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Board and Chair. Thank you so much for being here this evening. We are back for this is our third meeting or work session on the utilization of the Cougar Paws, introducing the Cougar Paws to you, which is that strategic equity resource for planning and decision making that you have in front of you. You have the little flip book, the plat- placemat, and then there's a paper copy that you can take home with you. We also have some other things in front of you, a couple of board policies, and the little mini tool that we created for you. And as we go through this presentation, we're going to take some time to separate out into groups and do a little bit of work during our work session. So we're going to start out by just going through the agenda. We're going to remind you, first of all, I'm Katie Riggs, Executive Assistant of President Tim Cook. This is
Casey Layton, Chief Culture and Impact Officer.
And Tina Francisco Evans, Program Coordinator for the LEAP Office.
And the three of us, as you know, have been working together on this, and we are coming back to you. So for tonight, we're going to remind you of where we started and where we are today. Remind you of the Cougar Paws, the updated mini tool that we're hoping the Board can use for anything, and then also the three members of the Board that make up the Board Policy Review Committee will utilize this every time a board policy comes before them. And then we are going to practice utilizing the mini tool with the two board policies that we have printed off in front of you. And then we'll talk about the discussion and next steps. So again, just a reminder, what is the Cougar Paws, what it is and what it is not? It is a resource for you to gather information from people impacted and the systems that the government or that govern our culture, norms, and access to power and resources. It's also many other things. It is a mindset. It's a a growth mindset. It's a shift and a change in your mind of the way you look and think about different things. The decisions that you make, the policies that are created by you or Board, and the different things that are going on at the college. What it's not, it is not a solution to end racism at all, and it is not to end discrimination. It's not linear. It's definitely circular, and you can go forward, you can go backwards, you can start in the middle, and you can go multiple times. So again, it's just a tool that you can utilize. This is what it looks like. This is the framework. And we created, using the actual Cougar Paws, the three of us went through and created this mini tool for you to utilize when making decisions and really taking a look at our board policies. So we're hoping that over the last couple sessions, you have had time to review the mini tool and the Cougar Paws, and you're ready for a dive in and to get to work. So we're going to have you separate out just in twos, if you don't mind just being with your partners that's right next to you. So Ryan and Kathy will be together. Rob and Wade will be together. I'm going to have, and actually, I'm going to have Joe join Rob and Wade, so it'll be three of them, and then both Irene and Jane will be together. And Tim, you can, you're welcome to join in with the two, yeah, on your left. We're going to have you, the, both the groups on this side are going to start with the Board Staff Communication Policy. So you'll see you have two policies in front of you. One has our nice colored logo and one does not. The one that does not is the Board Staff Communication Policy. So Ryan, Kathy, Rob, Wade, and Joe will start with the Board Staff Communication Policy. And then we'll have the Irene, Jane, and Tim group look at the background checks, criminal records checks and fingerprints. And what you're going to do is you're going to take time, we'll all be silent, and you'll read through the policy on your own. Then you will take a look at the printed out tool, the mini tool that we have in front of you. And you can either do this part first, read through it again, before you read through the policy, or have them side by side, so you can take a look. And you're going to utilize this tool as you go through the policy. And just allow it to let you think about the policy and changes that you might make. But again, remember that tonight, we're not focused on actually making the changes to the policy. We're actually focused on practicing with this mini tool and then providing us with feedback on if it was easy to use, or if you had things that stuck out to you that you think we should change on here, or how you felt about using this mini tool when you read through the policy. So we're going to go ahead and give you some time to think about it, and then you can turn and scooch together in your groups and have a little discussion to see if you felt like, when you were going through the mini tool, you are all on the same page, you felt like you all agreed or disagreed in some of the same sections, or if you had differences and kind of where you were on that. And I might be missing something, so I'm going to turn it over to my two lovely ladies here to see if they have anything else before we get started on our work.
Looks good. I think what I would prefer is just you all to get started using it, because then we can have more time at the end if we wanted to answer questions.
And then get in your group, yes.
We're going to give you some prompts.
Did you have some questions?
I was wondering about the time, timing of that, like how long individually, and then, and then how long will we have together?
It's six thirty. We have until seven o'clock in general, and so we would like to give you maybe fifteen minutes in total of like reading through and having discussion with your group, and then we'll come back. Does that make sense? Oh, we, oh, yeah.
I got it. Take ten minutes to read through the policy and then go through the tool and kind of like answer the questions that it asks. Then we will prompt you. You can turn to your neighbors and get into your group and kind of add it, and then at that point, have a discussion about like, what did it feel like? Where did you kind of land? And just kind of have a general discussion about how you experienced the tool. We'll give you prompts.
Right, right.
And just so you know, we all did it too, so we had, we, we had the experience. I'd love to get you started.
Thank you.
You have about two minutes remaining to finish up your reading and your question, your tool, before you turn to your neighbors and have a discussion.
It looks like y'all are finishing up. Good. If you want to get together, start talking. We have some questions on the board here that could be helpful prompts. Again, maybe skipping over the first one, because we really would rather you focus more on like the use of the tool. How clunky was it? Where did you get kind of stuck? Or what made you think a little bit harder? It's just helpful. It's about five minutes.
Yep.
You can get together.
He has to go off these, 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 me to not turn that.
Yours is one.
It's because people turn all the time.
I didn't, I didn't show you mine.
I'm sorry. It's, I already, well, I already would.
I didn't show you mine because I wasn't, I think too windy. And also I focused more on the tool and was on their policy, but I see exactly like your, I see your perspectives.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's why I liked the tool, because I maybe wouldn't have thought, I wouldn't have thought about it.
Yeah.
Um, the questions themselves prompted me, and I just wrote notes to like, how long does it take? When like it makes sense to use the notes? Like, obviously, if I'm saying, I definitely want to know why some does free. Otherwise, yeah, why did I, what did I disagree about? The time specifically at one point. You know, specifically, how we get through this policy meeting, something like that. Was this one awful?
Yeah, I do think that starting on your own and then putting together is going to be key, and then maybe even like going back on your own to re-read it, do it a second time.
You did, but that's a good, that's not a bad thing. We should be considering that's the tool. It was like always works. So you, yeah, okay, yeah, okay, I'm happy to do that. I thought you were, okay.
Nope.
Someone's going to have to take notes, okay.
We'll, we'll have the video.
Okay.
Well, we only have a little some fun, so we only have.
What comes after this?
It's we do our regular meetings, so it's about several, but, but right after these finish, we did questions, we go, we'll just go to the next timeline. You basically have this roll up, powered up.
Okay, so we can let him talk a minute. Okay, that's all. I didn't, I was like, I thought we only had thirty minutes.
We can, we can run it.
I won't, no. I'll, I'll, no, I'll bring him back. Because I'm, hopefully you're not opposed to say it.
You have about one minute left in your groups, one minute?
Then, then we can bring you up. It, what it means is if they have a lot of feedbackers, it's like, we can do another virtual, so now we did this, we could do a virtual session that provides additional team support around doing this one more time. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Yeah, that's right. That's fine. Yeah. Yes.
Okay, finish up your final thoughts. Mm-hmm. It's time. Thank you for going along with this and allowing us some time to practice with you all, because it's vital that we get some feedback from your experience with it before we start using it in real time for actual board policies with the Board Policy Review Group and then for you all in the future. So we had some particular questions here. I'm not sure if you were looking at them, but they're just okay. Again, there's no right or wrong. This is about us giving us feedback so we can streamline the tool and make it usable for you all, so you understand why you're using it and what, and the outcomes you're looking for. So I'd love to ask, what are some of your initial thoughts? Like, what did you really notice as you utilized the tool? And again, I'm, I'm going to guide you back, because definitely reading the policies will be like, oh, I see, we, we might need to change something here. I know that there will be, there will be time for that in the future. This is more about the tool. So general thoughts about the use of the tool. Thank you for that. We're going to, so there's, we have, there's reason behind that, and we can go into that. But also, we always defer to the lovely Ashley Sears who's here, and we could give you all more thoughts about like, why we do it in a particular way, but that's really good feedback. Like, what does a neutral feel like?
Or not.
Not applicable. Oh, yeah, you can use your mic.
You can either state that it fully agreed with ours, or it didn't apply or something, right? There were places that were clunky to take the tool to apply it to the thing that we were looking at, right?
Yep.
It was kind of like the wrong wrench for the, for, for what we were using.
Okay.
I needed a Phillips screwdriver and not a flathead.
Understood, understood. Thank you for that feedback.
Can I ask a follow-up? What specific parts of the, of the tool were clunky?
Well, and this is, we saw this as purely administrative kind of policy, right?
Okay.
It was difficult for, for instance, to apply. It was hard to sort of say, how would this apply with regards to mission vision and values?
Okay, so the mission vision of values.
Rest of it I thought was applicable. You could ask questions about clarity and, and who it was intended for, was it, you know, those kinds of things.
Thank you. Kathy, what about, yeah, yours and Ryan's group?
We don't like boxes, turns out. Oh, so there was, there was some feeling like we were doing homework that was expressed. And I kind of ended up ignoring this more and using this more in thinking about it, and, and that led me to and, and they reinforced one another, you know, like my main complaints with this were around clarity and consistency and inclusive language and accessibility, but those related back to the core values because I was looking at this and going, wait a minute, like, this is ultimately the purpose of this is community and community, facilitating communication within the community, protecting members of the community where you have different powers in, in different people. The word community is nowhere in this. It was written by a bunch of damn lawyers. So if you want to have students feel like this is inclusive of them, it does not succeed. So I think in the end that this tool actually did deliver on getting, getting me there anyway. But I needed this to help me get to that point.
It's great feedback. Thank you. Yes.
I just have a question. So what, what type of information would go into the notes and comments generally, or is it just any?
I will read an example. How about that? I think I was in the clarity and consistency, and I was just trying to figure out like, like what a term meant. And I know it might seem simple, but I was thinking about if I handed up this policy to anyone in the community, would they understand it? Would they know what we were talking about when we said the president? The president of what? Like, being able, so I wrote a note to myself that said, that's what I was concerned about when I said, maybe it doesn't completely align or completely agree. I don't completely agree, or saying like, what is, I know it sounds simple, but what's the board meeting? They, they might need to have a definitions box. Maybe we could do something like that, but I would, I wrote myself notes about that. Or the other policy was centered more on staff, and the communication was all about how staff communicate with the, and it didn't, like, do we want, do we have a separate one that's for students? Do we have a separate one for community members? Do we want to make reference to that? Do we want to make reference to that? So I just made notes to myself about why I ranked it the way that I did.
That's what I thought.
Great question. So what else might be coming up for you? Yeah, mm-hmm.
I think, uh, just sort of reflecting a little bit about this, I, I don't, I really have a hard time with the boxes, because it makes me feel like I have to accomplish something. However, I think Kathy and I approached this differently, and when we started to talk about it, she, like, she said she used the Cougar Pos thing more, and I was focused more on the boxes. But what it did do is it caused us to have a conversation about it and, like, bring up these different sort of questions, so like, she talked about, she just said the community thing, and how, and I was like, oh, I didn't pay attention to that, because some of these, I just went to, oh yeah, of course, it's about the mission, I just made an assumption that that, because obviously it's a policy for the college, and obviously, we need the president to be successful with the staff and the boards, we need to have this, but it makes me sort of think in this whole process with, like, policy, policies should have a context, like, why is this important? And so I think, as much as maybe I don't like it, or it felt clunky, like, it's sending us down the path, so maybe that's a good thing.
Thank you. Mm-hmm, this is actually great feedback for us, for when we're, if, whatever modifications that we make to help support the Board Review, Policy Review Group abound, what are the kinds, some of the kinds of the things that we need, want you to think about, and you don't necessarily have to mark a box, but how do you stop and pause and really consider? Is this an opportunity to change, or does this meet the purpose that we needed to meet? So this is very helpful, thank you. Did you have any? We want to keep you on time, the other things, this was helpful for us, we might end up sending another, just communication to you all to finalize it all, but we don't come back to you necessarily for another work session. Katie's gonna go on with next steps.
Yeah, so our next steps are to, number one, we'll send out an email to you, or please send us one if you have more feedback for us on this policy, and you were not able to voice that tonight, and you have stuff you would like to share with us. I wanted to let you know that we will start with the Board Policy Review Committee, they will come together, the three members of the board, and we will start reviewing some of our board policies. Once we have reviewed the board policies that, uh, and the suggested or proposed changes to those policies, uh, we will move them through the shared governance process, that's going to take some time, and especially since this will be our first year in implementing the new shared governance process with our board policy reviews. Um, we will take it to a, um, a couple of councils, we'll put it out for feedback from the entire college community, the public and students and staff, and then we will bring it through that process back up to the board at a first read, and so we'll probably be looking somewhere around the March of 2026 for those first sets of board policies to come before the entire board. Um, we're hoping to get them in front of you sooner, but we can't guarantee that, so, um, we will get them, and as we go through, you'll get the first read, then at the next meeting, you'll get the second and final read, we'll ask you for adoption, we'll update the website with those changes, and we'll start the policy process all over again, and hopefully, we'll continue through the process, uh, simultaneously, so even though you'll have some before you in March, we'll already have the Board Policy Review Committee going through and, uh, through the shared governance process, and we'll just continue as we get through all of our board policies. We have about a five-year, um, cycle, so we have a lot of board policies to get through, and we, um, are a little bit behind, so we need to get moving on those, and then you'll start all over again. Um, we're hoping that, once you start with a few of these board policies, you'll have more feedback for us on the tool, and that we can, um, keep refining and updating the tool so that it's, it's your tool, and so that it best meets your needs, and, uh, you're able to utilize it and make educated decisions.
Or at least stop and pause and think things through. Yes. For the record, I, just one more thing. I know I mentioned Ashley Sears' name, I'm sure I heard an audible, like, what are you saying my name for? Um, unofficial board policy, and I don't know what it is that you're actually talking to them about, and so I want to say, we did consult, but that was not, this is not necessarily something that got a stamp of approval out of a particular department, it was the work of the Cougar Leap Office and with Katie, we just consulted about a couple of things, so I don't want to throw you. I don't, I want to, on official record, that it was me kind of just saying, like, we asked for some consultation from that group to help us.
And I think that having, as someone who has spent a lot of time on policy reviews, uh, creating something that does insight, conversation, and reflection, and, um, takes you to different places is, that's strong work, y'all, so really, thank you.
Thank you.
This is very cool.
Can you remind us of who's on the Board Policy Review?
I will remind you at the retreat, um, because that is when we're going to discuss all of our committees and update those, because we do need an additional member to join, we only have two currently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any final questions for the work session tonight? Russ, thank you so much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Work session is adjourned. I like things Katie did work on.
And we are ready to begin whenever you are.
I will now call the Clackamas Community College Board of Education regular meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, September seventeen, twenty twenty-five, around seven oh four P M. Katie, would you please call the role?
Yes, thank you. Position number seven, representing Camby and Malala, Irene Konev.
Here.
Position number six, representing Estacada and Colton, Jane Reed.
Here.
Position number five, representing Westland and Wilsonville, Ryan Ingersoll.
Here.
Position number three, representing Gladstone and Johnson City, Wade Hathorn.
Here.
Position number two, representing Clackamas and Happy Valley, Rob Wheeler.
Here.
Position number one, representing Milwaukee, Kathy Heisey.
Here.
And our chair, position number four, representing Oregon City, Josephine Jo Crenshaw.
Here.
Well, now I have our labor and land acknowledgements. Sweet title.
Yeah, first, uh, the labor acknowledgement, we acknowledge that the foundation and wealth of the United States was built upon the forced labor of enslaved African people, involuntary and trafficked indigenous labor, and the often exploited labor of immigrant, domestic, and farm workers. Their vital contributions and, um, resilience in spite of violence, terror attacks, and bloodshed are integral to understanding our nation's past, present, and hope of what's to come. The prosperity many enjoy today is rooted in centuries of labor extracted under conditions of injustice, inequality, and ongoing systemic oppression. Acknowledging these truths is a step towards honoring those who were denied justice and toward creating a future that is more equitable, inclusive, and humane. Oh, sorry, that's a labor, I'll leave it. The land acknowledgement, we acknowledge that the Clackamas Community College campuses reside on the traditional homelands of the Clackamas Cascade and Tumwater bands of the Chinooks, as well as the Twalton and Pudding River bands of the Kalapulia and Northern Malala people. They lived and prospered by maintaining strong cultural ties to the land and through wise management of resources. As signers of the Wilema Valley Treaty of eighteen fifty-five, they were removed from their homeland to the Grand Ron Indian Reservation, where they became members of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron. Please join us in taking this opportunity to thank and honor the original caretakers of this land, their lives, and their descendants that live on as tribal members today, still carrying on the traditions and cultures of their ancestors.
Thank you. The Clackamas Community College Board of Education welcomes community members to attend board meetings, to become acquainted with the programs and operations of the college district. Now is the time for the regular public comment period, where anyone can speak on any item except agenda items, seven point one, because the public hearing will be held later in the meeting. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
There are no, uh, no one is registered to do a public comment tonight, thank you.
Terrific, thank you. To, tonight's consent, consent agenda consists of the following items. Number one, A, approval of our minutes from the executive work and regular sessions of seven sixteen, twenty twenty-five. One B, minutes, special work session and special meeting of eight thirteen, twenty twenty-five. One C, program changes, geograph, geographical information systems, G I S, technology certificate of completion, and one D, program suspension, associate of science area of emphasis at Portland State University. Acceptance of two A, our monthly financial reports, two B, our personnel report, and two C, our bond update. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing that there is none?
I have an approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are you a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. With approval of the items that are okay not being discussed during the language that we just slept. There, if there are no items that are moved, we have called for the motion, we've gotten the motion, so we're fine with that. Now we add new business, first read.
Uh, we do have to call the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, you were so close. I thought you had it.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Those that are opposed, any abstentions? The motion passed. New business for this session. We have the first read of resolution number R twenty-five slash twenty-six, authorizing contracting services for a limited duration of two years, senior project manager to implement colleges with not to exceed the limit of nine hundred thousand dollars.
So, before, before Vice President Schaefer, um, jumps in on this topic, I just wanted to, um, uh, kind of tee it up a little bit for him. The, um, college is needed, as the board, I believe, knows pretty well, a new, um, enterprise resource, uh, program for many years. And, you know, we experienced that, um, and we're fortunate during the cyber attack, and we've had just a number of challenges with our current system, you know, um, running patches on patches on patches of software, and to the point where we, um, can't hire, um, uh, um, computer programmers anymore that, that work on some of the, some of these systems. So, we need to, to switch over to a new, um, SaaS or software service, um, uh, program to do this, and, and, uh, is this as, it's a two-year process, it is at least a two-year process. Um, I wanted to, to tee this up, I've agreed to be the sponsor of this, um, whole process, which you would probably be surprised, you might think, you know, Jeff or Sabi would do this, but this is work beyond just, um, software, this will require some real change management across the college, um, it'll impact a number of our systems and programs overall, and so, um, we, you know, Jeff will explain, we're, we're coming in front of you to hire a, a project manager and all this, but, uh, I've taken on the responsibility of making sure that, that everything moves forward, because it really is a, a college-wide effort, um, will really, uh, I think, challenge us in, in some ways, I, I was involved in this at my previous institution, it took, took quite some time, and, and I, I'm not sure we're all ready yet for, for what this means, but I, I wanted to, um, to let you know just sort of how, how seriously we're taking this and how, and, and we know that the work ahead of us, and with that, I think I'll let, um, Vice President Schaefer kind of tee up the, the request.
Thank you, um, President Cook gave the great, um, segue for this, uh, this is a, um, first read, so, um, pinch hitting for Sabi, and he will be here for the second read for any technical questions that come up on this topic. Um, as President Cook mentioned, we're moving to the cloud, we expect that to be at least about twenty-four months of true change management, where we need somebody onsite, a consulting firm onsite actually helping us get through that process. Um, this is a, uh, not to exceed nine hundred thousand, um, we don't plan on, anticipate on spending that much, but that would be if you were to take the highest of the firm's current bids, I think we're currently working on four different bids that we're going to interview and look at, that would be the highest firm working every day for two years, right? So we take the, what is the max it could possibly be if they were here, um, for two years, so that's where we're bringing to you, and hopefully by the next second read, Sabi will have had more, um, in-depth, um, narrowing down of that process to bring to you more specifics, but for now, we just wanted to make this a first read, bring it to you, because it's a big project for the college, um, when I ta, tell folks about it, it kind of reminds me a little bit of our owner's rep, so, for the bond. So, um, you really need somebody here when you have a couple-year process to ki, kind of guide you through that, um, and that's a lot of what this is, so, with that, I'll take any questions.
Uh, of course, it, it's a big number, seems like, but they also, uh, are we hiring an individual, or is this a team?
Generally, um, generally, it'll probably be a key person onsite, will be those, so when we see eight hours, it'll be like one primary person here onsite. Um, but they will be really a member of a firm that we're paying that firm in an hourly rate. But generally speaking, it's, you're getting one project manager to really lead that through.
Four hundred and fifty thousand a year for?
Yeah.
His service, or her.
Or hers, yeah. I will say, um, you bring up a good point that I completely left off, this was, um, one of the reasons we also pursued this was our auditors confirmed that this is eligible for bond funds as part of the software upgrades for our system, I T systems, which had a bucket in our bond. Um, and so that helps offset those costs as far as being, um, operating, they won't hit our operating or reserves, they will be coming out of our bond funds.
And so you said this was the highest of the, the bids. Um, so, I assume it seemed reasonable, the others were in the neighborhood?
They were, they were all kind of in that same ballpark when I looked at them.
And not everybody can provide this service, I assume.
This is a pretty specialized, these are all going to be, um, focused in doing E R P change management implementations for large organizations, essentially.
What, can you explain what, oh, we finished. But he are, I mean, I've mentioned enterprise resources, what is that enterprise resource?
It's really your main system, so an E R P and enterprise resource system is, or, um, enterprise, enterprise resource program, um, is your main system that usually operates most of your functions in an organization, a lot of other systems attached to it, so, um, your outlook and things like that are an office product that attaches to your main system. Um, but your main system is really what you're logging into, it's our student-facing system, it's our H R system, it's our finance system, that's all run through Alution's colleague is our main system, so that's known as an E R P in large organizations.
Um, I'm, I'm wondering, so it's going to be one person potentially onsite, but they also have the backup of the team of the company that they're from, in case they need their.
Yeah, we won't know the specifics until we start interviewing, um, right now, we've got just, the R F P went out with the bids coming in, and we're reviewing that, so we wanted to get that first read to you, and that's why I'm hoping Sabi will have a little bit more of, like, what that would look like, who are those finalists, and what that might look like for an actual um, product that we're going to be bringing for that final, um, person.
And, and in regards to our processes, there are like a pretty in-depth inter, um, review, review, or, um, recommendations and things like that, of past work that they've done.
Yes.
Technology's changing so quickly.
Cross, it reminds me a little bit of a cross between an interview process where you have a multiple people doing an interview of an individual, um, and a R F P process where we actually have a team, because it wasn't our, it's going through an R F P process, you actually have a team that's doing all the formal scoring. The two are pretty similar in the, the nature, but it is a, a team that's doing the, the scoring and the interviews.
And we're doing that work over the next couple of weeks, so we will definitely have, uh, that information ready for you for the second read.
Just, just as a reminder to the board, that the second read will be at our next meeting, and, uh, we should be able to come up with any other questions that you might have.
Just, just one brief one, is this migration from inside within the same software family, or?
It is, so pollution.
You're going from, I'm. Going from an on-premise.
An on-premise colleague to the cloud version of colleague. Yes.
Uh, one question. This might be, you might have answered this with the bond comment. But is there a, what's the reasoning behind hiring a consultant or a firm versus a regular position that's a two-year position?
That's a great question. Um, we had that same discussion. Do you bring in somebody and hire a project manager onsite? Generally it's hard. I think the, maybe the best way I can explain it is it's a very specific change management when you're going from, um, one higher education system from an on-premise to the cloud. All four of these responses we got were very specific to people who have done these colleague conversions from on-premise to the cloud or something very similar, which would be very hard to do if we put a recruitment out on our general job openings website. The chances of getting somebody actually to do this. We actually use Omnia, which is a national firm who goes out and seeks agencies who have professionals who have done these types of work. So it actually, we had to use a third-party person who came in and actually got us these four, who said, these are people who do exactly what you're looking for that brought these in. So it's a little bit of a niche, kind of that point of it's very expensive too, because you're bringing in somebody that is coming in and this is what they do is to help change manage an organization from colleague on-premise to the cloud. So I think that's why we had to go here is just to get that specialty service specific to this.
I can appreciate the thoughtfulness, uh, doing this. I've been a part of this work before and it's a lot of work. And so thinking through that, moving forward, so.
And just given the, our ever-increasing dependence on systems like this, I think it's responsible and wise to be doing this now rather than later. And I'm sure Sabi will have some, um, some pithy remarks about security and increased security for making this move. And, um, you know, I, I think overall this is a good thing and I'm excited to see it coming forward at this point in time. And it's super great that it qualifies for bond funding. I know that was anticipated, but it's still always nice to hear when that's really how it works out. So, um, and looking through the job description, um, it's, it is a lot and this really, as a foundational piece of the college, it is just the kind of work you don't want to, you want the experts doing it. So I think it'll be exciting to see what opportunities it provides once everyone's been through the agony of switching to work.
Yep.
And if done well and properly, uh, what do you expect the benefits to be?
I think it was in the board packet. Um, yeah, actually, and Sabi might be able to speak to it well. When he comes back, because he's done a lot of this ROI and the cost analysis, lots of efficiencies in, um, the process currently. It's, it's a lot of work when you have customizations on an on-premise product to test it, retest it, see what's broken, how we've customized the way we put a student in the system or we pay our payroll. Um, when you go to a hosted site, you tend to get your processes to align with that hosted site. And then as they do patches or upgrades, it's, it's just seamless. It just, you don't have to use your staff time to do all those upgrades. So there's efficiencies such as that and your, um, as Kathy mentioned, that the secure, the cybersecurity is a whole different level of it's their system with, on their site. Nobody's on our servers at that point.
That's a definite plus.
Yeah. If I could add, I mean, in, in just thinking about staff that's here and staff across the campus and the, and the workarounds that they've had to do for years to try to, to try to keep this uplifted. And I'm not just talking about IT, I think all of our, you know, all of our folks here that are, they're trying to work through that. So you think about the hours spent because of an inefficient system. So there will be, there will be lots of gains there as well from, from staff time.
And, uh, do you see students as well as staff benefiting?
Hmm, I'm not sure. Right now we use a different product for generally the student-facing products. So I don't know how much the student interaction would.
I was just at a seminar yesterday with Illution. They happened to have a conference in Portland I went to and they were showing. So the, the question is possibly, or the answer is possibly, they're showing some of the student-facing products that, that we may or may not choose to, to use as part of this migration over. I was kind of blown away frankly by a, a lot of the work they can do. I mean, there's, there's one that you can, um, you know, a, a potential student can come in and from day one, uh, be able to, um, basically get, uh, in any, any kind of area they're thinking about majoring in or focusing in, their entire two-year program laid out for them, uh, prerequisites and all the rest, and then, um, live on the fly, be able to, to make changes and then, you know, and really build that schedule based on, based on all the information we had. And it was, it, you know, we're be able to, to be able to sit across an advisor and really in real time, um, be able to do some of this work was just, I was just like, wow, this is, this is light years away from, from what we've been able to do in some, some cases. And that was, they, they had a couple of different, um, student-facing programs that, you know, I, I was just sitting there watching. I was like, oh, these will be interesting to explore and see once we've done this migration about how we want to interact with that or not.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jeff.
All right. Thank you.
Our next agenda item under the new business is a revision of a budget amendment. So I'm going to ask Dean Christie Owen to come forward and present this item for us.
Hello and good evening. Dean Christie Owen, Business Services. Pleased to see everyone again. It's been a few months. I'm hoping this is a quick, short and sweet revision to our fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six adopted, recently adopted budget. Uh, the contents of this packet and this amendment are quite similar to the actions the board took last September, where they represent the true ups or fund balances for how each of the legally defined funds at Clackamas Community College ended the prior year. So when we have gone through and reconciled the revenues and expenses by fund, we are looking to see how close the estimates were when we were projecting last spring to where they have ended on our, um, on our books. Our auditor for our annual comprehensive financial report or ACFIR has recently, um, come onsite. He is conducting his work and so we will, we will get his final audited numbers in December. However, our department managers and leadership at the college are making financial decisions throughout the fiscal year. And so taking this opportunity right now to adjust any of our fund balances and how they interact provides them with the most up-to-date information in their budget to actual reports as they see in our financial reporting system. So there is no new change outside of having us closer to where we believe we will be with our audit and our final audit is, comes forward to the board, um, generally in December, likely in December again this year. And at that point in time, there may be the opportunity, if we see changes or patterns that are sufficient enough to warrant a current year revision to revenues. Um, and that's where we are trying to have these concrete checkpoints to where we look at how we are doing before we get to the fiscal year end. And so we are really earmarking that last opportunity in either May or June, centered on preventing any over expenditure by our legally defined funds. So that is the goal and the intent of the action before you today. And I'm here if you have any questions on the content. Hearing none.
I don't have any questions, but I, I appreciate you keeping this before us, you know, that as frequently as you do and keeping track of all of these numbers.
And the update on the audit. Appreciate that.
Yep, it's, it's here every year. So we'll be back again with that and then we will see you at another of our, um, regularly scheduled items for the board. Thank you.
I'd like to ask. Since Christine, that, that didn't spot so quickly. No, I was just, we were, I was talking out loud. I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve the, uh, the session? Christie comes back with us with their exact audit numbers.
So we're looking, oh yeah. So we're looking to approve the budget amendment of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
So moved.
Hang on a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? For the record, the motion passes. All right, we are on, we're, we're getting through this. Hang in there, Wes. We're coming up to student and faculty presentations. We have an association report. And these reports shouldn't be no longer than three minutes. First, we will ask Brianna Davis from the ASG to come forward. Welcome.
Hi, hello everyone. Uh, I'm just getting over a cold right now, so I'm sorry if you can hear that in my voice at all. Okay, so getting started right now, uh, ASG is currently finishing up the office remodel. Uh, all that really needs to be done at this point is moving out some cabinets and tables. Other than that, we should be ready to move into our new office space come the new school year. Uh, one of the main things we've been working on over the summer is our pantry project. Um, a recent update on it is that we currently have a Y statement and that, da, 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 da. Okay, the Y statement is going to be posted to the pantry fund page through the foundations for the upcoming, wait. Okay, for upcoming, Caitlin will put this on the pantry's fund page for the upcoming Cougar Community Campaign. Once this is launched on September twenty-second, the info will be available to the college community for staff to make payroll deduction gifts. Community members can also make one-time gifts online. So we will make sure to send a link to, uh, distribute amongst the appropriate attendances. Foundation donors will receive some communications already. So whatever outreach you can do, uh, will be helpful. The campaign will close on October twenty-second. So that'll just be work that ASG can do more for that. Uh, one of the events that we've been getting ready to put together is the Clubs Fair, which is mainly put on by our Clubs Department, which is an opportunity for students to see all of the clubs and resources that CCC has to offer. It's going to be hosted in the Wachino Mall with catering as well. And this is happening the second week of the term. We are also getting ready for Pop In To ASG, which is a new event that we've started hosting more regularly, which is where essentially every week a different department of ASG will be tabling to tell students about their department, hopefully get more engagement so that students understand who we are and what we do. Um, also trying to hear student feedback is another goal that we're trying to achieve. And then ASG will also have a table at the Cougar Kickoff. So hopefully if we can get any more recruits for people looking to be in ASG in the future, just based off of all the new students that'll hopefully be there, um, that is something we're looking forward to. And we also just finalized our bit for our fall training, first, the student life and leadership. So that's all we got. Any questions? Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Great spot.
Yep.
Full-time faculty, Charlie Lennemeyer. Did I get it right?
That's good. Yeah, that's really good.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. So my name is Charles Lennemeyer. I'm full-time faculty president. I'm really excited to be here this year. I think this is going to be a lot of fun. Um, because this is going to be a bargaining year. So that's one of the, you know, I was on bargaining team last time. So it's going to be fun to see it from, from this side too. So I think it's going to be great. Over the summer, we've had some really cool things happen. So like in my own department, uh, we've had some new additions to the building, uh, some capacity increases too. Uh, we're moving forward with more improvements as we move forward. Um, according to the machining capacity and increase in capabilities, we do, um, we're doing more with, with our equipment by increasing the capacity within our, our machines at a much lower cost than buying, buying new equipment. Uh, this helps get more students through the program so that we can actually, um, teach more people and, and actually get, give them a better education, that sort of thing. Um, we are going to reach a point eventually, we're going to have to start adding classes. Uh, of course, this comes at a greater cost. So at an, in an effort to keep those costs down, we're trying to increase those capacities per class so that we don't have to go to that extra expense. Unfortunately, eventually we may actually get to pre-COVID levels and I'll hope, right? Because those were pretty great times. Um, in the math department, um, Mark, um, Mark Yanata sent me, sent this to me. I'll just read it straight. Um, career math faculty member Adam Hall has had a busy half summer twenty twenty-five. In addition to teaching differential equations and vector calculus, Adam was able to join the college president in completing two segments, sixty-one miles of his fifteen-hundred-mile odyssey um, to visit all seventeen community colleges. That's awesome. That is really awesome. Aside from running and teaching this summer, Adam has also been meeting with students every Thursday afternoon this term in his math class to teach, to go over math and chess uh, during, um, student hours as a supplement to the traditional office hours that he normally keeps. Adam regularly hosts a weekly meeting with his students in the classroom where he engages them with math, but, uh, I'm sorry, chess, mathematics, question answering, tutoring. Adam has, um, Adam Hall started these math class and chess classes, um, during student hours to reconnect with Clackamas students and to, um, return to campus following the COVID nineteen. Uh, Adam continues to run his math and chess student hourly, hours quarterly, um, with good attendance even during summer months. Katie Hollingsworth from the ma, from the music department says that she would like to let the board know that the AVE and Wind Ensemble are planning a trip to the Baltics in late June twenty twenty-six. This is a once-in-a-lifetime educational and cultural experience, allows our students to perform in world-class venues and collaborate through the exchange concerts with European musicians. Explore the rich history and culture of the Baltic nations from, uh, Tallinn and medieval old town of Riga's north. I'm going to just apologize right now. Some of these names I just can't say. Um, anyway, a lot of really cool stuff over there and, and Cathedral Square. Uh, to build confidence, broaden perspectives and grow as musicians, musicians in a global, um, and global citizens. They would also like to perform for the board this coming December. And I think the date has been penciled in. That's the report. Any questions? Excellent. Thank you so much.
Just to note that the board wasn't. Thank you so much, Charlie. From our associate faculty, we have Christopher Beck, the president. He's not on tonight. He's not here. Classified Jennifer Pope, she's not here tonight either. So the man of the hour, running man. Our college president, you have a report.
Thank you, Chair. I have a few items actually, and I'm going to start. Um, we've got a couple of new deans here at the college. So I'm going to ask Dr. Plotkin to come forward and introduce to you, um, two of our newest employees here at the college.
Good evening, Chair Crenshaw and Board. I am thrilled to introduce our two new deans. First, Dr. Anne Ennis, the new dean of institutional effectiveness and planning. And Dr. Anne Mary Nash Rooney, the new, the new dean of arts and sciences. Um, I'll start with, uh, Anne. Uh, and just to give you a quick overview, um, institutional effectiveness and planning is a division includes, I say include because I'm not, I'm worried that I might forget something. But so if I do, someone will correct me. But institutional effectiveness and planning includes the Center for Teaching and Learning, Curriculum and Scheduling, Grants, Library, Online Learning. Library, Online Learning and Educational Technology, and it also has responsibility obviously for planning, including unit planning and strategic planning, as well as Anne serves as our accreditation liaison officer. Anne comes to us from the University of Utah in Salt Lake City. I'm sure you know, but it is a public research university akin to the University of Oregon or Oregon State University in Oregon. Anne was the Senior Director of Academic and Professional Programs in the University of Utah's Connected Learning Division. University Connected Learning connects, quote, "students and community learners with flexible educational offerings, allowing them to learn, return and refresh throughout their careers and a lifetime of learning." University Connected Learning was the University of Utah's hub for online and hybrid learning modalities. So Anne comes to us with a really strong background in teaching and technology. She is also dedicated to innovation and education and brings deep knowledge and experience to the CC Division that is also our division focused on innovation. Anne has a professional and academic background in education, having been a K-12 teacher and earned her PhD in education with an emphasis in curriculum. She also has advanced knowledge in Spanish and is very excited about our programs taught in Spanish. And I asked them for a fun fact, I kind of sprung it on them in the evening, just before the board meeting, so this is what she told me. She said, "I can talk about competitive fencing with the best of them." If you want to know what that means, well, you'll have to.
We can answer that for you if you want to talk about that later or talk about saber fencing. I'm very happy to be here. And it's nice to meet all of you this evening.
Again, really pleased to have both and really pleased to introduce Anne Mary. Anne Mary again, Dean of Arts and Sciences. Arts and Sciences includes art, business and computer science, communications, engineering, horticulture, journalism, music, science, social sciences, theater, water engineering, technology and world languages. I think I got them all, you know. Anne Mary comes to us from Bellevue College in Bellevue, Washington. Bellevue is the largest college in Washington State's community college system, community college and technical college system. She taught as a faculty member in accounting there for ten years, as well as teaching at other institutions in the Seattle area, and then worked as the Dean of Arts and Humanities for three years. Arts and Humanities is the largest division at Bellevue. Anne Mary's academic background, background is in business and accounting, and her doctorate is in management slash finance. She is focused on providing an engaging workplace, already considering innovative ways to communicate with folks in her division. She helped institute a bachelor's in applied science at Bellevue and is excited to help CCC develop a bachelor-level degree. She's excited to develop partnerships with organizations and businesses in our community as she did at Bellevue. And she is dedicated to inclusion, providing access to our programs for all and to increasing the diversity of our faculty and staff. And her fun fact is that I like spicy food, dash habaneros and Scotch bonnets. Scotch bonnet peppers are very, very hot, so I'm, I'm quite impressed. Please help me warmly welcome these wonderful new deans, and if you have any questions, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer.
Did you say both of their names are Dr. Anne?
One's Dr. Anne Mary and one's Dr. Anne, yes.
Yeah, and we occupy the Anne block.
Thank you, welcome. Yes, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Yeah. So enrollment updates. Our, for the year, our reimbursable, our reimbursable FTE, how we're funded, is currently up about 10%. This past summer, our FTE, reimbursable FTE was up 11%, so that one is fixed, it's done. For fall term right now, we're trending about nine. We're, you know, two weeks out, so things will change as we go along, but, you know, we'll, we'll get better numbers at the next, at the next meeting. We're seeing early enrollment increases in our apprenticeship programs, in our communication theater arts, our health sciences and our health and PE athletics. So those, those are trending either with a hundred more enrollments than this time last fall, percentage increases of more than thirteen percent to more than 100% in our apprenticeship programs. So again, these could change as, as we go along, you know, as they shift, but, but those are trends that we certainly like to see. High school enrollments, it's too early to tell. We don't get those really until week four, they kind of come through. But as you know, that's one of our, been one of our strongest programs over the last several years, so I'd anticipate that that will continue to grow, but we'll, we'll, we'll know more later. Our career and technical programs are up about seventeen percent right now from, from last year. So they, that could again mean that they're registering earlier for those classes. It could be signed so that there's more, you know, overall more enrollment, we'll, we'll know more then soon. And then our developmental ed is up six percent and our lower division transfer classes come, are up about eight percent. So overall, looking really good for fall as, as we continue, continue to go, so we'll, we'll update you more next, next month.
Quick question. We budgeted for five, did we not?
We did budget for five. Yeah, and we've had some, just from preliminary conversations about do we, do we come to the board and, you know, change that, change that premise, you know, look on that. We're not ready to, to make any, anything yet, but, you know, obviously nice to, to have more, more enrollment coming in, more revenue coming in than we anticipated. Next week is our in-service week, so that'll be our big kickoff. Tuesday morning, 8:00 AM, we start with our opening breakfast in the gym. Our Chair, Joe Crenshaw, is gonna give an opening statement on behalf of the board. I hope you all, I know you're all invited, I hope you're able to attend. It really gives us a chance to connect with faculty and staff for the first of the year, talk about our priorities and have a little bit of fun before we get into the rest of the week's activities and then start classes the following Monday. So classes start on September 29th, Monday, September 29th is the first week of fall term. Also want to remind you all that next Saturday, the 27th, so a week from Saturday, the 27th is our board retreat beginning at 8:30 AM on the Harmony Campus. So we're gonna spend the day talking about board goals and priorities there as well. And then I just wanted to let you know that the Oregon Community College Association is holding their October board meeting here in this room, actually on Friday, October 3rd. So all of that, that includes all of the seventeen presidents and then a board member from each of the seventeen colleges that we meet, that board meets quarterly, and so it's our turn to host that in October. So if you're interested in that, I know Jane goes to that and I go to that, but if you're interested in that, you're invited to come here on that Friday morning and really see, see what happens there. The previous day, the Thursday, is a full day of just the presidents, all the, all the community college presidents will be here on that day. I would, it was in the consent agenda, but if you hadn't had a chance to look at that, there is a nice bond update in there listing, you know, the different projects that are starting and that, some of the timelines, you're gonna get more information every month on these. You'll, you'll be invited soon to what's really the first sort of groundbreaking, the gold shovel opportunity next month, because we'll be starting in the athletic fields, softball and baseball, and really be able to kind of kick that off. We're in design for the, the Natural Resources Center, there's a number of different things that are kind of in, in process. So that'll, that work will be kicking off and, and we'll keep you updated, but certainly as you have questions, let us, let us know, we'll, we'll try to keep you as updated as we can. I did want to, this is my first board meeting since I've spent my time running, my vacation running across the state this summer. So I wanted to make some formal thank yous. You know, I, I had a number of people say, "So what's happening at the college while you're out running around?" And I, I have to really thank David in particular for being the acting president while I was gone and Katie for really managing quite a lot of my, you know, my, my email and schedule. And then my whole executive team really, you know, did a phenomenal job of, you know, really running this place while I was out. I have to say, you know, there were long, long days, many long days where at the end I was sort of foggy and the thought of me making decisions about this college is probably not something that the board would have wanted. And so knowing that David and others really had the college's best interests and were making this happen, I'm just really grateful for, for that. I couldn't have done it without, without the executive team, so I want to, I want to formally thank them. And then I also want to thank the board. I want to thank you all for your generous support. I know you all supported the cause, but several of you sent, you know, encouraging messages, you know, let me know sort of how you're thinking. I just, I just, that meant a lot to me and, and the fact that you were supporting, supporting this effort for students. And then Director Hathorn came out and ran with me. And so I gotta, I gotta give you props for that, you know, he came down to, I can't remember where it was, was that Eugene or I can't remember where we were.
Outside of Cotties Grove, right?
Outside of Cotties Grove, yeah, we were down, down pretty far and you were, you were on your way to somewhere else and, and ended up spending the morning running with me. And so I appreciate you taking the time. And then several, several of you were here in Oregon City when I came in too, so, so I thank you. You know, that, I'll just say a couple of things. My, I had two goals. One was to raise awareness for basic needs for students. And there were more than 100 news articles, television interviews, radio interviews across the state and across the country around this. It, it ended up on the Senate floor, Ron Wyden took it to the Senate floor with a resolution, Representative Bynum took it to the House floor. There was quite a bit of interest and this, social media sort of blew up with it. So I really feel great about the awareness that we got for, for student basic needs and for community colleges in general in Oregon statewide. So I'm really, really, actually far exceeded my expectations for that. The secondary goal was to raise money statewide at each community college for basic needs funding and programs. My goal is 150,000. To date, we've raised more than 175. And so I'm really happy that, about, about that as well and that money that will go directly to students. And here at Clackamas, we're working with the foundation to really look at an endowment that we can, we can continue to build on that will help students there. So if you want to know more about this, the, we've, I've been asked to present it at the OCCA conference in Hood River in November. I think you're all going to that. You'll get a chance to really see a presentation, and I think I'm gonna try to find some other time just to do a, a come-one, come-all presentation, because people have lots of sorts of questions about the day-to-day and the blisters and all of the, the, all of the pain and the agony of it all. But I just, I just, I did want to, want to make one statement about that and just how much I appreciate all of, all of you and all the support that, that I got from, for, for doing that. And I'm just, it was, it was quite a phenomenal summer and event to do that. And then, and then I'll just, I'll just, and you know, we're, as I said, we're starting, you know, the 29th, we're starting another year. It, it's, it's gonna be challenging. You know, I, I'm really confident, I'm really excited to start another year, but given recent events with the violence in our country and, you know, what that, what that means for, you know, colleges and, and others and responding to that, the, the continued sort of upheaval with, you know, federal challenges and funding and policy and the rest. And then even this week, you know, the impacts of the state, the governor coming out and really talking about, you know, having to potentially, you know, put freezes on things and really looking at that. It's gonna be tough. And, you know, Charlie thinks, I mean, you know, we've got bargaining coming up. We know there's gonna be a lot of things that will test us this, this year and work through, but I'm, I'm excited, I'm energized. It was really great meeting the Anne's, you know, and having you meet the Anne's, and there's lots of really good things happening, but, but it, it'll, it'll be a challenging year. And I just, I want to, you know, be positive about that, but also really be reflective and thoughtful about how we all show up and really do our work this year. So there's, there's questions for me, that's my, my update.
I just want to clarify, how many toenails lost?
Five toenails lost. They will grow back, but yeah, it was, and I had way too many blisters to count, yeah.
That's rough.
I just want to say that in the community where I live, it was absolutely ecstatic listening and hearing that you were running. They had no idea that there were seventeen community colleges in the state of Oregon. So we all learned something in the process, and I enjoyed the running because I wasn't running. We appreciate all that you've done and bought the, everybody comes and says that Clackamas Community College is the place to be, so. Thank you. Thank you for.
Thank you.
Any other comments? We, we can't vote on that, so we're.
Thanks for not dying.
You don't know how, how, how real that is. I would not recommend people run across the state. There are some really interesting places.
We thought you were cloudy when you got started. It got worse, apparently.
I assumed a lot of those roadways were not very pedestrian-friendly.
No.
No, there are, I will just say, there are a number of places in the state that are quite beautiful but are not designed for anything other than cars. Even ones that, that have signs that say scenic bikeways. I was, I said, I was sort of astounded why where bikes and pedestrians are supposed to go. So there were, yeah, there were a number of what I would call close calls. Fortunately, I didn't get hurt. And yeah, nobody got hurt, but it, it is, it is something that in retrospect, it was, I probably wouldn't recommend somebody do.
Anyone else?
Quite an experience. I'd love to hear more details, yeah.
And we hear that next time you're gonna run with him, correct?
There, there won't be a next time, or maybe, really? I don't know if you heard that last part about, yeah, one and done.
Thank you. I'm gonna give the Clackamas Community College Foundation report. And I'm gonna just give some highlights, some things that are happening. Scholarship period is still open and was set to conclude in mid-October. They're on track to have a number of applicants. In fact, they predict to have three to 400 more applicants this year. Anyone here that is interested in doing some reading for the scholarships, please contact Deborah or Adam. Let them know that you can help out. We need help during the weeks of October 17th through November the 3rd. And you have time, I mean, if you're a slow reader, you can get your grandchild to read for you, whatever, so that you can listen and help them out to complete this. The scholarship, the foundation is also having a mod pizza party, pizza day across the street from OC campus on October the 2nd. They are continuing to help us to raise funds for CCC's Disability Resource Center. Be sure to tell the cashier, if you're there to get a pizza, that you are supporting the CCC Foundation. At your seat, we are, you have your seat at this sponsorship flyer for next year's Rise Up luncheon.
Well, we'll get it to you. We'll get the flyer to you.
They are, they are in the, in the making, okay? But last calendar year, the foundation distributed over $83,000 in basic need support. As of this week, the foundation has already distributed $107,000. With three-plus months to go, please be thinking of who you should invite to this event to learn more about CCC students and the need and what we hear as success stories that's come through, the basic need support for the foundation. We need your help. Thank you in advance. Alright, our next report is thank you to the foundation for all you do to help us out. I'm sorry. Our next report is for, ask Jane to give us a report on the OCCCA Association.
I would be glad to. I guess it's mostly meetings. We, some, one we just had and two that are coming up. We, a number of us, I think, five of the seven of us were able to attend the, the Board Leadership and Governance Summits at, in Chemecketa at the beautiful Eola Center, Wine Center on September 6th, and it was, it was excellent. I've been to a lot of those and I felt this was the best, and I think it was really good as a board too. I think we, we enjoyed it and, and had a lot of nice conversations. We had a couple of great presentations. One was "Governance That strengthens Accreditation: What Works, What Undermines", by Selena Grace, who's the president of Northwest Commission of Colleges and Universities, talking about accreditation. We also had a long, very interesting and very official presentation on transparency and accountability, Oregon Public Meetings Law Training, which is something that we are all required to have as board members. So those of us who went there got it and it's a different one though. I think this is a new one. So that was good. Karen Smith did an excellent. So that was good, Karen Smith did an excellent job on, on presenting that and so we will do that. And it was just a good conference and I'm, I'm really glad that it was, it was also a number of older board members from across the state and a lot of newer board members and mostly younger board members from across the state. And that was a nice combination and I think that was good to see. So that was passed. Coming up are two, one is the next OCCA board member, Tim mentioned that, that's going to be here on the, is the sixth of October? The third of October, the third of October, I'm so excited, it's going to be in this room. People will be able to see our amazing campus and, and, and get a sense of things. And there, it's always, it's always good, so I'm glad that that's, that's happening. And of course, we still have the conference coming up in November. I don't think Tim mentioned this, but he is going to be doing a presentation there also about the, at the, at the conference, correct? Yes, on the first day, the first night, I believe. The opening, the opening, so that will be cool, he can, he can talk about that experience. Some good, good, I was part of the Member Services Committee and we've chosen a lot of varied and interesting and great presentations that, for the event as well. And so that's coming up in early November. I, I thought it would be interesting maybe to mention a couple of the things about the latest revenue forecast that was from the Oregon Office of Economic Analysis. And it's, it's going to affect us, I believe, like, like Tim was saying, but the, it's HR one, the, the big, one big beautiful bill one is going to reduce Oregon's general fund revenues by approximately eight hundred and eighty-eight million over twenty twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-seven brianium. At the end of the legislative session in July, lawmakers had budgeted a four hundred and seventy-two million dollar surplus as a buffer. However, the forecast now projects a three hundred and seventy-three million dollar deficit, which is nearly, a swing of nearly eight hundred and forty-five million. The kicker tax rebate has been reduced by nearly two hundred and thirty billion, the expected rebate by two hundred and thirty million. And taxpayers are now anticipating a refund of about one point four billion. Elevated risk of recession, economists estimate Oregon's possibility of entering a recession within the next twelve months at twenty-seven percent, which is higher than usual. And economic input packed distribution in uncertainty. The forecast details losses in key sectors, including manufacturing trade, transportation, business services and construction. Meanwhile, capital gains taxes bolstered by record tax assessed asset valuations partially offset some revenue losses. So anyway, that's just kind of a little, those are the kinds of things that I think we'll be talking about at OCCA and that we'll be talking about here at the board, but I, I wanted to present that, that was in the OCCA newsletter. So I think that's about all, that's about all I have to report for now. Sure.
Are there any questions that you need to ask Jane?
Okay.
Well, entertain a report from the Board of Education. Members? Ryan, you're not the plant, so. You're not the plant, so.
Plant?
Remember at OCC.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I can just share a few things that I've been up to. Like that board training was really, I think, being a new board member, it was, I found it to be amazing training, just for me jumping right in, getting to know some of my colleagues, but then also the colleagues across the state was really helpful, done really well. Attended the Senator Aaron Woods's bench dedication in Wilsonville earlier this summer. And Rob and Tim were there and just kind of really cool to see the significant impact he made across the state and country in a lot of ways too, beyond just the work that he did at CCC and chatting with a number of people there. And then I just want to say a thank you to Katie and all the staff of, I've met with a lot of people as I've kind of came into this role, hours of conversation and Katie's organized all these, just getting to know the different people and the different roles that they, that they do and how they serve students. And that's been really helpful for me as I get acquainted, but just also really exciting to see and hear kind of what's going on. And also knowing I'm not like the newest person, there's like a lot of new people here. So that was kind of, I like not the newbie in a lot of ways, so that was kind of fun, so.
I have news, I am stepping down from the board and this will be my last meeting. It is not an easy decision, but it is, I think, the right one. I take this role very seriously and I have more on my plate than I can deal with. And I can't show up for you all the way I want to. And I would much rather give my seat over to someone who can be here in the way that this community deserves. So it has been a wonderful experience to spend time with you all and to learn from you all. It has been incredibly valuable to me in my day job as, I'm getting a thumbs down from the back. This isn't a voting opportunity. As I have been working in economic development in my, in my professional life to understand so well the value and importance and the way in which community colleges work and what you all do to serve our community is just incredibly valuable to me. So I really thank you all for that education that you've given me. And it has been such a great opportunity to work with some really cool people on the board and on staff. So I thank you all for that. And you've made a lifelong friend for CCC out of me. I'm not, I'm not vanishing, I just won't be on the board. And in fact, my day job kind of requires me to go to stuff like this, so I'll probably still be around. And, you know, I'm thinking about Tim's kind of lifting up that we've got a tough year ahead. And I just, I can't stress enough how much community is important in times like this. And how, you know, tools like this that are designed to facilitate thoughtfulness and going to hard places and daylighting the conversations that really need to happen are both valuable intrinsically and are, I think, a measure of who Clackamas Community College is as a whole. The fact that this is something that this community prioritizes really speaks well of you all. And I just hope that you all continue to lean into that and to lean into being there for students and prioritizing their needs, being creative and thoughtful and doing it together, even when you really, really don't like the person next to you at the table right at this moment in time. Because I think we need that more than ever right now. So thank you everyone, really appreciate it.
You have to come back one more time so that we can say thank you and recognize you and have your plaque and your bag of fruit and things of that sort of.
The candle.
And the candle. But we do appreciate the work that you've done and those that have kind of followed you and, and looked up to you. So thank you, we appreciate everything that you've done.
Just a word about Kathy, I still remember when she first got on the board, she stepped right into the chair. I guess it was a reluctance from the rest of us to do so, but I really appreciated that about you. I am very willing to step up and serve in that role and you did a fine job. Appreciate that about you and you represent your community well and you'll be missed.
I, I would just add to the same for those comments. I, I said privately to Kathy just before the meeting started, you know, that it has been a pleasure to, to, to get to know her and have her as part of this board. She's just so thoughtful and kind and, and really a help to, to move this institution forward. So you really will be truly missed as part of that, right? I know you're not dying, right? But a loss is a loss and we're going to lose, right, when, when you're not here. And so we appreciate that very much. I wanted to, to add to President Cook's comments just about, and everybody, Kathy says as well, about how challenging this next year or this year is ahead for us, right? You know, it is difficult sometimes, given what is happening today, right? For us to remain a beacon of inclusion, right? We are pressed every day to make decisions and it feels like there are sides that are being formed, right? This institution, everybody that involved in it in my mind owes it to this country, to the students and everybody that's involved in this place, and I mean place, right? Remind ourselves that we're here as a group. And that group is only as strong as we remain together as a community, as Kathy pointed out, right? You don't have to like or love the people you're around, right? But you do have to respect them, right? And really, if we can all just, if I asked anybody to do anything, and sometimes it's hard, just be mindful every day, right? Have an inclusion, right? Just take one step out of your life when you're not feeling it, right? Just step back from it and just sort of let it go, because it's going to need it for us to get through it, in my opinion. So I appreciate those comments and I do believe are pretty challenged. So just hopefully we, we get through this together, all right? I did want to add to, to Tim's running comments, he missed somebody really important when he said thank you, right? And that's Patty, right? So if you didn't get to follow him doing this, right? Every day was really not about Tim, right? Tim was out there making it happen, but there were so many people that were helping him do this. And behind the scenes, helping cheering and drooling on, yes, Tim suffered all the pain and did all the running and he, but he decided to do that, right? There were so many other people who didn't decide to do this, who showed up, right? And one of them probably was his wife, right? So when she, when he told her that he was going to do this, I'm surprised she didn't leave. But anyway, nonetheless, but even my experience when I was out there, Patty was amazing. She was, she was the energy and the glue to keep everybody together, as well as Tim's kids got to go out there several times, right? You got to spend some time with your family out there as part of that, right? And I can tell you that is, I didn't do what Tim did or spend as much time running, but I have trained for extreme running defense in the past. And to spend that much time running, he, I'm sure he spent a lot of time with his thoughts in his mind, right? And it's kind of an amazing thing to do, to be able to spend that much time with yourself, because usually people don't do that, right? So I encouraged him to just sort of write down some of the things that he remembered, especially in this, because there will be times when, you know, you'll look back upon this and, and really be thankful for all the people around you. But I can't imagine you're more thankful than you are to your wife.
Well, I just wanted to say Kathy, we're going to miss you. We're going to miss your voice and your leadership and thank you for every moment that you have given us on the board and the college. And I also want to say that the next who knows how long is going to get rough. And it's already pretty rough in general. And just to remind us how important it is that we have a team that came up with a brand new tool to help us think about how do we make our college a place of belonging? And how do we address our policies to make sure that they are serving the needs of everyone to the best of our ability? And I, I'm really proud of the team, the board and the college that are focusing on making sure that every student has the best possible outcome when they set their foot on our college, college campus. Thank you.
I, I would like to just, everybody has said what I would say about you Kathy, but you will be missed and you have been a joy to work with. And yeah, so just know that. And also kind of want to say what, just reiterate, it's exciting that we have a new year coming for and that. And we've got, it, it, it's not going to be easy, but it's going to be what it is. And boy, are we in a good position to do this amazing work that all of you do and all of you do with such heart and with such brilliance. And so, yeah, that, that this is, it's going to, it's going to be a good, hard year, is what it's going to be. Or hardly good, I don't know, one of those two.
Well, if there is no further business, Kathy, thank you a lot. I think that you, you left because I came. I didn't even get a chance to work with you. But thank you, we, we appreciate all the things that you've done for us here and we look to see you. I do mean it, you know, we got flowers and balloons and things like that. So if there is no further business, the Clackamas Community College Board of Education meeting is adjourned.